I'd like to call this meeting to order. We can all stand for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this is the town council meeting of the town of Apple Valley, and this is Wednesday, the 19th, day of December 2018. We have a roll call.
Debbie Cobb here.
Marty Listonby here.
Paul Edwardson here.
Danny Basher.
And Mike sends his regrets. He's busy in Hawaii right now. We excuse him from the meeting tonight. I know, we thought about trying to move the meeting there, but it wasn't in the parts.
Or the budget.
So, anyway, mayor's town update, I don't think I really have a lot. It's been, because of the holidays probably, it's kind of quieted down a little bit. I did receive some information from the state of Utah regarding the 150 is going to be their kind of model that's going to be coming out, that's called, it's about the golden spike, 150 years. It comes up in May, and they're encouraging all the towns, they've given us some, you know, a packet of promotional things, that kind of thing. They, like all the towns and cities and so forth, they have a 150 party in May. And so, I've kind of talked to the, my staff also, the events committee chair, also my wife, planning a party for sometime in May for everybody. So it'll come after the chili cook-off, and we'll figure out a theme and have a 150 celebration here.
You're covering up for the budget on that?
Well, some of the stuff I had thought about as well on doing that is whether we do a 5K, you know, a bike kind of a thing, you know, let's do something that's oriented around that as well. So, you know, we'll investigate into some of those things. And I was talking to Blake on the planning commission. He goes to the tourism committee meetings, and he was talking about, you know, that I should be there as well to help meld into that. There's a lot of interest in Apple Valley for the bikes, and Southern Utah Bike Association is interested in partnering with us. So we might try to, let's try and hook up with them, and we'll do a bike thing out of it, you know, have it end in the park. We do, you know, hot dogs and hamburgers kind of a thing, doesn't have to be real fancy, just, you know, we'll come up with something fun for the kids to play, and the bikers, and so.
We're rolling Gatorade for that crowd.
Yes, that's all right.
No, they like latte and a beer.
So, anyway. I hope I'm not missing too important, but I think that's about it, right, after the mayor's town update. Item two on the agenda has my name on it, so I'd like to declare a conflict of interest, and I'm going to turn this item over to Debbie.
Okay, last week at the planning commission, the planning commission reviewed the plat amendment and lot line adjustment for parcels AV-1-2-29-310, and AV-AVR-3-8, and ABR, and AV-1330E, making these three lots into two. Anybody have any questions or concerns about this?
Happy to explain it to anybody, I just, if anybody's got a question, don't feel bad about asking. We basically have three lots, we're going to make two out of it. One of the lots does not have access to it at all, it's landlocked, and so we're trying to make that, which is technically an illegal lot, into a legal lot by giving some of the furniture from our current home over to that, that allows it to, not even really a flagged lot, it's a legal lot because it has 100 feet of fringe on the road. And so that was, our goal is to make that a legal lot, and then our lot is actually technically not legal, I find out, in the process of doing this, because our home is not built on a dedicated road. The lot in front of us is Lot 8, the lot where we build is behind it, and so this in the process corrects that as well, making that a legal lot as well by combining those two into one. So we're just fixing two problems at the same time by doing these lot line adjustments to make both lots legal. Any questions?
Just say you're building one for yourself.
That'll help you too, but we've got to get the lot legal first, so.
Okay, I make a motion that we pass ordinance 2018-24, an ordinance for plat amendment and line lot adjustment for parcels AV-1-2-29-310, and ABR, AV-AVR-3-8, and AV-1330-E, making these three lots into two.
I'll second that.
Vote? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Three and one extension.
All right. Item number three is discussion national changes to Town Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Sean and I have done all of this, he's made some suggestions, we've kind of not wanted to wait on him any longer, we've made those suggested changes in the manual that, basically what they are, one of the items, let's see which one comes first here.
180 days.
Well, basically, it's, I can sum it up in a nutshell, if you've got it, you can read it, but we have a 90-day policy on, you know, probation period, and many of the cities and states have moved those to 180, to even 360 days, 365 days. And so, we've taken the lead on that and said we have 180-day policy for a probation period. That period can also be extended in additional 180 days based on a performance review that's done. So if we have a problem with an employee that's not egregious enough, we want to let them go, but we want to talk to them about it, we can extend that policy out to 180 days. Someone in our last meeting when we talked about this said that the state of Utah just is 360 days. They have a year policy on their probation period. So, anyway, that's one of them. The other is on the health insurance, you know, we wanted to create a policy that limits the health insurance that's available to an individual employee, to just the employee. I like to use, you know, what our neighbors do kind of thing, I was talking to Sean about it, right now the city of St. George only pays 80% of his personal health insurance, and he has to pay the rest of that, and if he wants his family covered, he has to pay that as well. They're only paying 80%. This is saying that we're going to pay it 100% up to just the person's policy. Any coverages that are additional above and beyond that, if you want health, or if you want, excuse me, dental coverage or eye loss coverage. If it doesn't include, for example, life insurance, that's something that sometimes is included in a life policy, that's fine if it is, but if it's not, and you want to have it, and it's an extra charge, you have to pay for it. So we're just trying to bring this into where the corporate world lives, is where the town's not paying for, you know, carte blanche on everybody that wants to say they want the Cadillac plan. And I just think it's prudent that we try to save dollars and not make this a cash cow for someone that's got to work for the town. And so, that's kind of the nuts and bolts of what we're changing, so we're X-ing out, you know, coverages that include their family and so forth out of this. Retirement system, retirement benefits, anybody that is full-time, we're required, because a couple mayors ago, they signed up for retirement, and we don't have any choice, we can't get out of it, we can't say that we changed their mind and leave the retirement system, we're stuck in the retirement system forever. And anytime that someone is a full-time employee, we are required to provide the retirement to them.
And the eligibility is after their probation period?
Okay. And so that's another thing that we've got in there, so. Any questions from up here? Any questions from up there? So I make a motion that we make the changes to the town's policy procedure manual as described.
I second the motion.
Vote?
Aye.
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 Item number four, discussion and action on unauthorized journal entries performed by previous county closed books. We've beat this one up to death between the dogpile on the mayor that happened at the last water board meeting, if you haven't seen it, it's unmuted, and previous meetings that we've had, where I brought some of these issues up and made the people aware of them. The end result on this is that hint and verdict has instructed that we go ahead and reverse those accounts back to their original state. Do you have a question?
Yeah, it clearly says unauthorized journal entries. So, if they're unauthorized, isn't that illegal? So I don't understand, you know, what happened and where the town is going.
Well, the journal entries were made by our previous bookkeeper, and they were, the reason why this is on here is because for us to go in and do these kind of things, we want to do it in an open and transparent way. And that's why it's on the calendar tonight, so we can go in and just say that we are reversing these entries that were made in a public forum, so three years from now, when someone comes in and says, "What the heck were they doing that day?", they can always go to this meeting and find out that we are open and transparent in saying that we're reversing these entries for this reason. And when these entries were made, that meeting wasn't had, it wasn't done, it wasn't done under the vote of the town council, it wasn't done under even the, you know, watchful eyes of the mayor at the time. Some of them were under Robert Campbell, two of them were done five days after I was mayor. And they were just entries that were made that showed that the town owed the SSD a bunch of money, basically $58,000. Yes?
Were those journal entries that were requested by the auditor? And what?
Well, I think that was alluded to in the water board meeting, and when further investigation on that revealed that it was just a phone call made by our accountant at the time to them, saying that they found a mistake and we need to correct it, and so, of course, they're going to say, "Okay, sounds good", basically. And, but it was a mistake that they even made them at all.
Do we have a copy, a printed copy of that audit?
Well, the audit's not complete yet, we're talking about a conversation with the auditor, and so at the time that this happened, you know, if I call them as mayor and tell them, you know, something, you know, they're going to just, I mean, because of my position, they believe me, and the same thing happened with our accountant. What the accountant didn't say was that that was their last day of working for the town, also that the mayor doesn't know about it, or, you know, that there's an agreement in place otherwise, I mean, there was a lot of stuff that was left out of the conversation. When hint and verdict got all the facts, they interviewed, I think even Denny Bass, because he was a water board chair at the time, Rick Moser, and Nathan Brodmann, he made, did a lot of investigation, and he just called us up and says, "This is what he's determined is the right course of action, then we just reverse those charges." I didn't dig too much further past that with him as far as the conversation or anything else, but we felt like it was not right to do those the way it was done, and in the end, he came back and said that he agreed, so. I am, I'm not trying to beat anybody up on this, I just wanted to put this to a public forum so you guys understand why we're doing what we're doing.
When do we have a copy of that audit?
The audit, whenever it's finished, I think last year, wasn't it, was it January?
The audit's required to be completed by December 31st, 2018, and submitted to the state auditor's office. And that's one of the problems that we're running into with this situation, is that there has to be an agreement between both parties on the status of these late fees, or there will be disclosures to the financial statements which essentially could impact both entities' ability to borrow money into the future. So, you know, we're, these are pretty serious issues that we're wanting to get fixed right away, and I think we're all looking forward to having a meeting of the minds on these issues.
Yes?
Margaret Osowski, 1024 West, what's the about?
So, kind of going back to the beginning, in March of this year, the current accountant at the time started retaining those finance charges, and that continued through August of 2018, so the total amount of those were $27,000. And then, the two entries that we're discussing, one was for $37,000, and the other one was for $19,000, the total of which, those three altogether, is $83,000. And it is interesting to note that the town, since inception, has only collected $73,000 of finance charges, so essentially more than, more than we've ever collected.
You had a question?
Yeah. Jerry Georgerson, 1064 West, Foothill Drive. I was in the meeting when they, this was all discussed, and we got a big, long dissertation on, well, you know, you saw you were here, but what I don't understand is, they were adamant about having a meeting ASAP with you to get all this stuff, did this ever happen, or they, the water board, you know, Merritt that night said that he wanted to get with you really quick and get all this stuff all squared away, and we're looking back into the books again.
Yeah, well, I guess kind of the way that meeting went, it was more about getting their pound of flesh on me that night, so we didn't actually sit down that night and do what they described in the meeting. But they had, at the same time, we also were in communication with hint and verdict on these issues, and wanted to do their homework as they see fit, you know, so I wasn't pressuring them as much as just, you know, in fact, I didn't even call hint and verdict, they called me, said, you know, asked me some questions, and then they followed up with some other phone calls to Rick, and trying to get into some of the history of why we're doing what we're doing, how we did it, and what the agreements were, and Nathan and Denny Bass. And so, when they finally called me, it was, it was all done, they pretty much just said that, "We've done our investigation, and we feel like this is the right course of action." So they says, "We're not, you know, a court, or, you know, they can't tell us we have to do it this way, they're just saying that based on the fact finding they've done, they feel like this is the right course of action", is all they said. And I just left it at that, I didn't, you know, probe and dig it any further there, they just felt like that we should reverse these entries that were made. It takes away this $85,000, basically, that we supposedly owed the water district, and they recommend that we do this, and they felt like that was the right course of action based on our history and everything, all the information they have, basically, is our auditor, so.
Louis Ford, 1903. Thank. This is a big, a big word, unauthorized. Is that, is that deemed unauthorized by a law agency?
Yes.
It is.
You have something on that, Ben?
Yeah, I think the one comment that I want to make on that authorization, because, you know, accountants are authorized to do general journal entries, that's a, it's a common thing, especially year-end. One of the biggest problems that we ran into is this is two fiscal years prior to the current period. And so that's one of the biggest problems that we've seen with it.
The current, one, a couple entries were made of our 2018 books that are currently being audited, and that audit's supposed to close here, like we said, at the end of this month, so.
Won't it, won't it be determined at that point in time, when this audit comes out, whether or not this is a real word or not? I mean, unauthorized by whose, by whose authority?
State law.
State law.
Yeah. This, this, I just don't, you know, I like to leave it at that if I can, I'm not trying to roast the SSD over this, it's, it's not, authorized would mean that the town council raised their hand and says, "Yeah, it's okay, that we, glad you found this error, and we appreciate you correcting it, and we all vote that it's okay for you to open up the books to do that." That would be a legal way to do it. And unauthorized is where you go in at nine o'clock at night, and you enter in that the town owes the SSD $58,000, that's basically what happened, so.
Okay, we're good.
So, anyway, I'm just.
Still not sure, I don't.
Richard, you had your end up.
Yeah. So a quick question, so if we reverse these as they recommend that we do, and our new accountant's now saying that we have to end of the year to get this done and approved and agreed upon between both entities, us and SSD, so that we don't have a problem in the future of getting government grants, or, you know, government loans and so on and so forth. Is by reversing this, is this going to fix our issues, or are we going to run our stuff and go evolve, SSD have caused more problem, or what's, what are we having with this on there? Are they going to accept it, we can all move on, so we can be active with that, or we're going to have more issues?
I think everybody wants to move on and be happy with it. If we reverse, when these entries are reversed, that will not immediately resolve the audit issue. There has to be an understanding between both parties as to how much is owed each other.
And so are we going to act to try to get that done before the end of the year, with very little time?
I'd like to say that there's a possibility that's going to happen, I had a meeting with, phoned with Ross, in person with Harold Merritt, I think they want to put the money stuff behind us, but the word in the street is, is Tony's hanging on with both hands, but I don't know if that's a factor or not, I just, it could be that she's, you know, Harold's explained it to her, and she's no like, oh, but I really don't know for sure. That's, I can't control whatever they do, I just.
Do the SSD and the town have the same auditor?
Name?
Oh, sorry, Pam Quayle, Smithsonian Way. Do the town and the SSD have the same auditor?
Yes, we do.
And will these be reconciled, and both audits will be available at the same time?
Yes, should be, yes. Yeah, it is the same auditor, the same as that person, she talks to the same guy I talked to. And so that's, you know, that's probably an advantage that we have, at least we know what both are doing, but, you know, I don't know where their position is on all this, we're, we just want to move on. But at the same time, I don't want to reward them by, you know, for giving all this money that they, you know, wrote out of our checkbook. I just, you know, I just think it's wrong to reward that action, if you don't like me just saying to Amanda that she stole the check from us, that that's okay, that's, we'll not worry about it. I mean, it's not much difference then, as far as I'm concerned.
Rich Cobb, 1193 East Big Ten, see the points up in vision. Going forward, it doesn't seem like having two sets of books like this is a healthy, ultimately the money's, whether it comes from the SSD or the town, it's coming out of our pockets, right? So I think it should be protected a little better, and going forward, having two sets of books like this seems like a conflict. And I don't think that's a healthy way of running the town going forward.
Well, they, they are a separate entity, as far as the SSD, and they, they have to have separate books from us. They've always had separate books, we just share the same bookkeeper, and so, but they are, they're their own entity, they have their own books, we can't change that part, that's, that's how it is, so. Anyway, I think that's enough for a public comment. Louie, you got something?
On an audit, let's say this is, if it's unauthorized, it's against the auditor.
Yes.
To jump awards, it should jump out during an audit as written, should not, I mean, the auditor should say, "Hey, this is not..."
Yeah, that's not the case, because what they audit for, and this is something I've learned as being mayor, is they don't really audit the books line by line, transfer by transfer. When they audit us, they'll ask each one of us that are work for the town, "Are you aware of any, you know, issues?", or, you know, meaning they want to know, "Did somebody do something they're not supposed to?", kind of a thing, and they'll, they'll ask us each one individually with, not in a group setting, that kind of a question, and, but they don't actually paper trail every single dime at all, I'm just kind of surprised at that. They really look at it and say, "Did we record our minutes?", you know, within three days of us approving those minutes, and they look at that kind of stuff, and it's not as, I mean, something that's glaring, they might say something, but.
Even to me, like, this should be glaring.
Well, yeah, but if, if, he's doing both books, and if you put down one place that these guys owe us money, and over here, we have this money coming, and it's the same bookkeeper that works for both of us, where's the red flag?
It is glaring. They requested, the hint and verdict did request a new, updated general ledger and trial balance, and they're comparing that against what was previously submitted to them, so.
All right, let's have a motion. I'll make a motion, in fact, I, I make a motion that we, on the unauthorized journal entries performed by the previous accountant to the closed books, that we allow our current accountant to open those books, to make those reversals general, general journal entries, so they, books are as they were when they were closed. The only thing we're doing is changing them back to where they were when they were closed.
I second the motion.
Vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Number five, consider approval of reports and recommendations. Events committee, Mr. Listonby? Any, you want to talk about maybe your last event or whatever?
So, we had our volunteer Christmas party on Saturday, and we had several people there, and I think it was fun, we had a good time. Thanks, it was our way of showing our appreciation for everybody that donated their time and their efforts, and it was a really good time. The next event that we're going to do is at vaccinations, January?
26.
26. We've got Dr. Myers coming back to do that, so if you need rabies or December, he'll be available for an hour, and then we're going to do a big drive to get everybody's animals registered as well. Yeah, what would be doing round, you know?
You got to call and ask. I'll find out what shots he's going to bring, and what's the cost, but we'll have that before now.
Yeah, we'll have that before, and you have the forms and everything available, too. And anybody's got any idea of how a town that doesn't have anything to do with the railroad, wants to celebrate our railroad start? You're trying to mislead us.
Tiff? Choo Choo Charlie. I'd like to thank everybody who participated in the cookie exchange. We had a pretty good turnout here, we had events committee down here, we had planning commission, when, thank you, and we brought all the extra cookies, which were plenty, down to the Heritage Senior Home. Jerry Graham came with me, and these seniors, there was one little man that didn't want to walk with his walker because he was arguing with the lady, and she's like, "If you don't do it, you're not getting your cookies." So he got the walker, and he got his cookies, so they were very appreciative of all the cookies that we brought down.
These are pretty fabulous cookies, too.
One more thing, along that line, we also did a canned food drive, food can drive, some of them, anyway, food in the cans. And so I took them down to the herd and food bank, and they were teared, I mean, they were just so appreciative. When I got there, there was like five-
When I got there, there was like five or six people in line and these people were in a lot of need. And I think that if we could do it like every quarter and just, you know, try to get something going, blankets, clothes, they were, they were handing out everything. So, you know, maybe this, you know, your closet and, you know, bringing jackets and whatever you can, we'll do that. I think what we'll try to do is every, every three months, every quarter, we'll try to do it.
Why don't we switch it up and do clothes one quarter and then food and clothes and something like that?
Good idea.
Each event, you could even have bring some canned food.
Yeah. Put them in a clothes locker.
So, anyway, thanks for your assistance on that. It feels good when you do those things, you know? You go and you see these people and, I mean, they're, they need our help and it's fun when you show up to do that. Planning commission, I don't think we've got anybody here, but they're, the next planning, the next planning commission is canceled because it's the day after Christmas. I mean, who does not want to rush down to the polls so you can fight the trials, so you can get a little extra discount? So, anyway, so they were gonna be exhausted from getting up early to do that and they're gonna cancel it immediately. So, the next one will be, what, January ninth, I think that comes out. Fire department, fire chief.
I don't have too much. We've been having a lot of calls lately, but burn season's ending on the 23rd, so.
It's empty?
Yes. It's already shut down in Washington County. I've been pretty mean on letting it burn longer in Washington County, so.
You started March?
March first, through the eighth. So, it'll open back up here in another couple of months, but nobody, not too many people have followed for this.
It's very annoying. So, not very many.
What, down there across the street from us, I don't wanna say name, but they had some cooking, it looked pretty big. But I, was, you know, did anybody pull permit down over there? Let's just say southeast of me.
If they're zoned agricultural, they don't need to pull permits.
Actually, it wasn't residential. I was gonna give you a call because it was really, it was.
I went out there two times.
Oh, okay. Uh-huh. It was, it looked like good, separate fires. It was pretty crazy.
Yeah, I went out there two times.
All right.
So, like I said, they don't have to fill out one. They just have to call in the local department.
Okay.
But there's a bunch of rules and regulations on what they can and can't do, so. Anything besides fence framing, pretty much they're supposed to have permission from the fire marshal, which 99% of these people don't, so.
The fire department, bonfire over there by the storage unit sure freaked me out one night.
Yeah. That was lit up. I got called back for that one.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
If we burn out of season and have Dutch oven sitting there, do you consider that?
Fifteen minute off fire. I don't know.
Did I?
It's in the Dutch oven.
If you're not invited, it didn't fine.
Heard that, Louie Law bring that in.
All of it's done.
Training, we got a lot of training, almost from January 12th all the way through the end of February, every single weekend we're gonna have training, so there's already skipping classes. Um, be careful on the highway. We've been having a lot of stuff on the highway lately, so I know it hasn't hit real cold yet, so we've been lucky. But February and January usually are really cold months, so it's sure it's gonna ice up and burn out, so just be careful. Don't burn your dang Christmas tree. I don't wanna get culled out because you're torching Christmas trees this Christmas, so.
The pay.
That's it, I'm done.
Chief, in springtime, maybe will we try and get together that CPR class again?
I'm starting it after January, so I'm probably gonna train, push forward on it after January.
Cool.
I've talked with the instructors and they wanna start after the new year, so I'll do it together on a class. Depending on how many people and stuff like that, the fire department's probably gonna sponsor it with fundraising money, so it's like 20 or 40 dollars a person. So, we're just gonna pay that and whoever wants to, because we want as many people certified as possible in our area, so we're just gonna bite the bullet and try and get as many people as possible. And I, I wanna have the whole office done. You guys are dealing with people, you're dealing with the public. Who knows what can happen when those people are coming through the door and get heated or anything like that. I had to talk with them, so I'd like to see all the office members get certified, so. Think I'm doing this.
Okay.
Nice answer.
All right, thanks for comments.
Do you have any people that have trachiaspises that, is that a problem?
No, we don't do anything bad with that. The therapeutics and EMS, they're really, EMS, we're just, it's for CPR and first aid and.
I can do those.
But she's stronger, so. Yeah, trachis.
Well, even as someone, just an individual, I mean, you'd be doing that as a good Samaritan. You'd be putting your, you'd put yourself.
It's generous.
But if it's like that, then.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna tell you not to. Just be aware, it's a little spooky out there. There'd be some people.
I'm dying to all have permission to crack my ribs.
So, thanks for our chief and let's see, Big Plains is not here, so moved on to code enforcement. Now, Rich went to code enforcement training over in Hawaii, if I remember.
Yeah, it did go very well, but it will be scheduled every year for a refresh course.
I'll join.
I don't think my wife's going this time.
The only thing about roads and storm drainage right now, we got a couple dips on some of the roads where we put underground piping and that we need to kinda look at those and get those even out a little bit. Other than that, there's, the gentleman on the corner spent a lot of money for his own drainage, did a super job. There's one section out on Canyon Drive that needs to be cleaned out and we're gonna have to work on getting that cleaned out because it floods the road every time it rains, so. Other than that.
If it's something we can do on the backhoe, just know we have Kevin available to do that whenever we need him, just give us that, make a phone call.
Got you. Other than that, Chip?
Danny Fox did a survey, paid for it out of his own pocket for our cul-de-sac. Our cul-de-sac is in dire need of being fixed.
Okay. I drove up there and I know on, I think it's, is it your house that has the rocks there?
Right.
And are you okay if I push those back? I didn't wanna touch them.
No, they've already been pushed back.
Okay, so you're saying that if I measure from the beginning of the road, it's?
There doesn't need to be any kind of drainage through there because.
I didn't say drainage. I was just talking about the, the issue on that road at the end of Mount Zion Drive was the cul-de-sac, the rocks the neighbors have put in there, that makes the cul-de-sac smaller than what's legally available or supposed to be available?
No, it has been pushed back before, so this would be the third time it would be pushed back.
But if it's still too far.
Surveyor.
Just have to look at the survey and the latelines.
Well, they did a survey, they put a, in the center and then I can measure from there and I can tell if it's the right size by just spinning the tape around that survey and that's kinda what I need to do and I try to put on my to-do list.
Remember when that house was built? It was built.
I know, my dad put rocks out in the cul-de-sac.
I'm sure it's Jan.
The father built the house.
Yes.
With cul-de-sacs, any cul-de-sac, you have to have a certain distance of turning radius and one of those built, probably never built right, you get one. Fire trucks have to have so much room to be able to come there and turn around. They're not supposed to back up. They're supposed to be able to make a full circle and turn around, so there's a certain distance that has to be, that's all the mayor was trying to say.
Well, what we're dealing with, Richard, on that is that my understanding from some of those, my understanding from some of those neighbors is that they paid for a surveyor to come out and put a flag, you know, the little feather things, right in the exact location of the center of that cul-de-sac. And the cul-de-sac itself is supposed to be plenty big enough for vehicles to turn around, but the neighbors have pushed rocks in so far that they're beyond that area that's supposed to be free, not just as, you know, trying to make it bigger, just to try and make it the size it's supposed to be.
Right.
That's my understanding and I, I'll take a tape measure out there, put a nail on the ground and paint, paint a line around it, but I, my understanding is it's smaller than it's supposed to be. And then for that reason, they can't, a semi truck gets back there, they can't turn around.
Danny, in regards to your sinking utility trenches, we need to actually soft cut the rubber in there and recompact the soil to make it right. We need to go a foot bigger than the trench and put asphalt back in there. Just heads up, that's what needs to be done, unless we got a fine floor.
Okay.
There's two of these spots in town across the roads.
Mosquito baitment. I think, didn't you have a meeting or do you have a thing up?
Yeah, I went to the mosquito baitment meeting and they gave their yearly, the end of the year, how many mosquitoes and what kind of mosquitoes were out. And St. George had the most mosquitoes. And, hey!
Was that 42?
Go! And anyways, but good news was there wasn't any Zika mosquitoes or West Nile in Washington County, so we were pretty lucky. And that's about it?
Good. Anything from the council? Under other, I just thought of a mayor's update, kind of an item. I'll throw under this next item, which is the town website. We're hoping to be up and running by the first of the year, we're that close on it. We're gonna have training this Friday on, for anybody that wants to train for it. And the code, Michelle, do you remember what they told us on that? In the next couple of weeks, we'll have the code on there for the most part. Could be, so it should be by the end of the year, we'll even send the code. We're not gonna have 100% of the code on there. We've got some, some of the code is just like on a piece of paper. We have to convert that to a digital format and so we've got a little bit of a process on some of the older stuff, but the new current stuff is gonna be all on there and it'll be searchable right away. But the, the website is, you know, in a state that you guys could look at it, give suggestions, comments, you know, criticisms, whatever you wanna throw at me. It's applevalley.teamaha, which is A-H-A dot com. That's just the temporary password, or temporary location of that, so. Applevalley.teamaha.com. And you can look at the new website if you want to take a peek at that. And I, I like the way it's coming together. I feel like that the information is, because it's all searchable, it's really nice. It's all ADA compliant, which can mean something to somebody in the, in the group that wants to read that website without the vision, they're able to do that. And that's one of the things I like about it, it's ADA compliant website, it's easy to, easy to read and I think it's more concise, that, you know, there's a lot of information there and there will be more put on there. One of the things that we have on there that I'd like some help with is I felt compelled to thank our veterans for their service and anybody that's a veteran that's in Apple Valley, I would appreciate a couple photos, maybe a photo when they were in the service, photo now, anything that you see fitting, a short, you know, military bio kind of a thing. And I would like to fill up that page with a thank you to all of our veterans that are living here in our community. And so, if you know of a veteran, take a look and visit the website, look at the page. And if you would like to have someone add it, feel free to email me the information. I'll get it right on there. The other thing I want to Google, search engines really feed off of links to other websites and other businesses, things like that. So, another thing I've put on there is a business directory. And so, anybody, you know, Richard Fisher, anybody that has a business, they wanna have on there, feel free to email me the information, so I can link my website to your website. That helps us both and it allows us to see what businesses are in town. If you wanna do business locally, you go to the business directory, you can find out who's there, what their contact information is, and that's another feature that I'd add to the website. Any questions on that? Rich?
So, on the new site, what would you just, in the search bar, look like Wiener pig and then the word just pops?
Right. Exactly. It's not there. And it's not there yet. Give it about a week, maybe two weeks, that part will be on there.
I'm gonna try.
But today, you get just to go in there and type in the search bar, dog, and it'll, boom, it'll come up, say, dog license, you know? So, there's just an easy way, based on calendars, we'll eventually have all these YouTube videos linked, based on the calendars of one of the two past meetings, we'll have all that integrated. That's, that should all happen the next two weeks, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, it's come on really well, though. Public comments, do we have a motion for public comment?
I make a motion, we open up public comments?
Say that, Marshall.
Vote.
Aye.
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 I keep my mic to say aye first.
Yep. So, anybody have anything that haven't already spilled out?
I have one comment I should've done earlier, I guess, but has anybody besides me noticed this pavement or that concrete coming apart?
Oh, yeah, you noticed that too, huh?
Yeah, it's coming up in chunks.
Where's this at? On the bridge?
On that. Our gateway project.
Gateway project coming in. You know where that new patch of semen is? Just this side of it, coming, whatever that is, east. You'll see it's coming up in chunks.
All right, hopefully I got to look at it.
Yeah.
That's a little small. You call when you drive through there, believe it's a pond.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, Bozer's Pond, that becomes another problem now because it's gonna freeze over. You know, kids like to ice skate on thin ice, so not good.
All right, thanks for comments.
I thought we, we're gonna take the town backhoe down there and kinda push the pond up to the side and let some of the flows and roll pond up a little more, so we don't have that issue.
We were gonna do that, never back down.
I didn't hear about that, so I can try to help make that happen.
We're gonna cheese the backhoe.
You're welcome to it. I'm not sure where the keys are just yet, but I need to go to Chase and buy a, buy a set of keys for it. It's, the guys have been helping us out, have their own key, you know, like Lane and guys that, but we'll, we'll chase that down.
All right, appreciate that very much.
Anybody else?
Mr. Kopp, anything else?
But do they have any idea when they're going to finish Mount Zion Drive, all with the cul-de-sac? When that cul-de-sac, when it rains, it really does get very muddy, even with the 98 feet that it's been.
Yeah, I just, I think everybody needs to get together and write a check.
Well, you know, 16 years ago, Marshall was told to drive his nice cars.
Yeah. And I've heard the same thing when I first moved here as well and there's pavement in front of my house because I wrote a check.
Well, even where you have it paved, there's holes all over each place in that house.
Right, that's because of all that heavy rain and water that flooded over there, that one rain and, yeah, I agree with you, that's, that's not ideal. But at the same time, we're only talking chip seal, it's pretty thin, you know? It's, you know, it's, only has like a five-year lifespan, you know? It's, so, you know, but I think if, if you want it bad enough up there, that's one of the answers is figure out how much it's gonna cost and everybody writes a check. That's, that's how our neighbors, well, our neighbors got it because I wrote the check, but, you know, that's one way to get it done right away. Because at this point, there's no money in the town budget to be able to pay for something like that.
If the town ends up doing chip seal by the.
If the town ends up building chip seal about 35 years for about three times, will that be the last of all? Right.
Anyway, any other comments?
Any other com, public comments? I make a motion, we close public comments? Vote, aye?
Aye. And I think we're down to the last item, which is, let's get that one, we're going to be a closed session in Germany.
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, see you next year.
I move that we close this meeting.
Thank you!
I second the motion. Aye?